Good evening, everyone. I'll call our meeting to order here in council district, excuse me, and the town at 6:00 P.M. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation, all the persons of the town? Roll call, please. All the person Murphy.
Present.
Murphyan.
Present.
Rizak.
Present.
Timmyan.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Is there any public comment, chief?
There is none.
Okay, we'll move on. I don't believe we have any questions on the agenda. Okay, there. So we have our roundtable discussion, first of the year. Eight point one, National Business Survey and National Community Survey. The Smith and.
Yeah, let me get off. You go up there, too.
Okay.
And I actually directly working on this, we need this project with Polco. It's our rep. So she'll have her work done over the next couple of months. But I just wanted to kind of reflect back on a little bit of where we were at back in 2009. How we went about formulating the 87 goal strategy and the 50 directives. And, you know, it was a time of transition, you know. And over that period, over the last couple of years, we have progressed carefully and cautiously and effectively, actually, in delivering results on our strategic plan. But one of the biggest elements of that, if you go back, if you have a copy of this, if you look at this, you know, it's kind of like the circle of the whole process. And right now, we're at that point, the environmental assessment phase, where we're looking for citizens, looking for businesses, to try and get a scorecard. How are we really doing? I mean, we can all report at the administrative level or at the political level that we're doing really wonderful in all these areas across the board. But unless we hear from taxpayers, their businesses, or residents, we really don't know. So this is really at that stage now where we find out is, you know, are we on track? Are we on the right track? We're on the right track as a result of the survey. Then we'll move into actually developing the new strategic plan going forward. We're at the so here 2026, '07, and '08. So I just wanted to share that with you before I turn it over to Ashley and let Ashley introduce our guest speaker tonight. So with that off and open.
So today, we are sharing information about the National Community Survey and the National Business Survey. And the results that we received from those surveys are going to drive our strategic planning for the year. We have been working with Alec at Polco to come up with our plan and our strategy for distributing that and getting the best results. So we have Alec Weiss. He's here with Polco. He's a representative. And he's been helping build a perfect package for us. And he has presented the questions that we're going to be sending out. And that was distributed for each review. He is going to give us information about Polco, their methodology. We want to make sure that everyone feels that they're included in this process and that there are no questions about the methodology and therefore no questions about the results. And so Alec is here to present Polco services and everything that goes into that. Thank you for being here, Alec, virtually.
Absolutely. Appreciate everyone having me. Appreciate the intro as well. I'll get your screen and then we'll start here. Hopefully, let me know if you can see it.
We're good.
We can see everything, Alex. Good.
Great. Okay, so I'll be covering the National Community Survey, National Business Survey. Happy to dive into methodology as well. Just also wanted to cover a couple of other things that would be available to you that Polco offers. So really, the goal of everything that we do is to provide local government decision makers with the data they need to make those decisions, make them effectively, make them decisively. So that's kind of the goal of everything we do. Polco's been around for about 10, 15 years. We used to be called National Research Center. That name is a little bit more familiar. We've been doing scientifically valid surveying across the country for about 35 years under that moniker. It's obviously a little bit confusing. We're not a national agency, National Research Center. So we changed it to Polco. We're kind of pioneers in the industry of local government surveying. Initially based out of Boulder, now we're based out of Madison, Wisconsin. So if you Google like citizen surveying, we have the first link that pops up. If you like look at Wikipedia, it says, yes, they, you know, pioneered the industry. So we've been doing it for a long time. Currently, our database is benchmark surveys. I think this is a little bit outdated. I think now it's more like 50 million voices just north of 600 communities across the country utilize National Community Survey and then a little bit less for the business survey. But we do engagement work. We do scientifically valid surveying. And then we do also some analytics as well. I provided a little bit larger of a logistics sample list of who else we work with in the Midwest at the back of the presentation. Included some here as well, but you're certainly in good company. Happy to dive into what the implications of this are in terms of custom benchmark comparisons as well. And so with both the National Community Survey and the National Business Survey, because there are so many like communities, you can compare yourself to the national benchmark with those. There's also the opportunity to do custom benchmark comparisons. So communities that you all would like to compare yourself to, number of factors there. There's things like income. We can do geography. We can do size. We can do education level or a combination of any one of these things. And so who you are paired with on the survey team, they're all certainly research experts. They can help you really decide all of that. So again, mostly we'll be talking about assess this evening. I do want to touch on engage and track also just really quickly. So historically, there's been two types of surveying that exist out there. One is like this like straw poll type of survey. Typically, it's called like quote unquote engagement work. And so that's like trying to get as many responses as possible. Maybe it's something like building support for like a golf course or a capital project, something like that. So that's one type. And then the second type, that type is good for certain things. It's much quicker than doing something like a scientifically valid survey. But then the second type is the scientifically valid survey. That takes a little bit longer. There's a little bit more legwork that goes into it, a little bit more science. You can't just spin that up, send it out, and then have results in a week like you can with an engagement style survey. So just want to highlight that you do also get access to an engagement platform with Polco. So by doing the National Community Survey, you do get an engagement platform as well. So if there's other things that you would like to spin up, send out to the community, that's available to you. And you'll actually build what we call like a subscribership on Polco through the work that you're doing with National Community Survey. So I'll get into sampling and all of that, but this will be sent out to several thousand households. And then you have the opportunity to like retain those folks for additional engagement work. And so it isn't just a one-time thing. It's pretty easy to garner a couple thousand responses or a couple thousand subscribers. And so then over time, your engagement work gets a little bit easier. So diving into the National Community Survey itself, here's a little bit of background in terms of the survey. Again, it's run by roughly 500, 600 communities across the country. Most of the time, this looks like either annual cadence or biannual cadence, similar to what you all are considering doing. So a strategic plan, make it a part of that. It measures the 10 facets of livability in a community. We realize some of these are not something that you all have decision-making power over in your community or in every community. So it's not necessarily, all of it's not supposed to be like a report card. It is just to provide a backdrop in terms of how livable is the community based on these 10 facets. So that's kind of how the data is broken down. This is also how our like quote unquote real world data is broken down to, which we'll get into in a little bit here as well. In terms of administering the survey, so do you want to find some information there? First step, and let me know if this is too much. I'm happy to kind of back off. But first step is what we would do is create a random sample of households in a community. So every household would have an equal and known chance of being selected to be part of the sample. We also factor for things like renters. You're going to have more of a bounce rate for renters, just a little bit more transient. So we do slightly oversample for that. Once we do that, we could also do things like sub-geographic areas. So if there are certain parts of the community that you want equally weighted or if you want to do it by council district or east-west, that type of thing, we can do sub-geographic breakdowns of data as well. We have a couple different mailing options, but the most common one, the one that I would probably recommend is two mailed options. So the first one is going to be a postcard. So it says a unique URL, it has a QR code, and an invitation and instructions. Just stating the person with the nearest birthday that just passed, please take this survey. Go online, take the survey. If you would prefer to take a paper survey, that's going to be coming in the mail in about a week. And then all households in the sample, so 3,000 households, they will also then weekly receive a full survey packet if they prefer to take it that way as well. And that's postage paid return, so no cost to them to do that. If you have a target in mind in terms of number of responses or number of responses by district, that type of thing, it's certainly maybe a good idea to increase the sample size. We'll play with the sample size. And we're happy to discuss what may work best. But with a sample size of 3,000 households, we can almost always get the data that we need in order to reach like a 5% margin of error. So then after we collect the data, we'll then reweight it. So there's two pieces here to make it scientifically valid. First is going to be that sampling portion. Second portion is going to be reweighting. So not all groups are going to respond with the same frequency. We will then weigh it according to your census data to make sure that it actually matches your responses. You'll have for each one of the questions, cross tabs, so sub-demographic breakdowns. You'll be able to see the data really any way that you would like to parse it. So tenure in the city by each question, age respondents by each question, all of that type of thing. And then if you do more than one survey, I just want to mention a couple of different ways to benchmark. So we talked about custom benchmarks, national benchmarks. And then obviously, what can be very helpful is being able to benchmark against yourself. And so then with more than one iteration, you'll see trend lines over time as well. For the timeline, this is a little bit conservative, I would say. More typically, we see something like startup is going to be 1, 2, 5, and that includes the printing and mailing. And so there's really three sections here. The first is going to be deciding on things like custom questions. Do we want them? How many do we want? What are the topics? And then our team is happy to work with you. They are survey experts. And so they can help craft questions that are not leading, that will lead to the data you're looking for, that we can fit the most questions or custom questions in the space provided. And so then that's that plus the sampling. That's the first phase. Usually, it's the custom questions that take the most time, so anywhere from again 1 to 5 weeks. And then data collection is a six-week process. That part is more so set in stone, so we don't typically change that. The last two weeks of that data collection process, we actually open, so it's a separate survey. It's called an open participation survey. And so then anyone who is not sampled, they'll have an opportunity to then go take the survey. So it's very often that people say like, why wasn't I selected? I really want to take this, but I wasn't selected. You can let them know the last two weeks, there will be an opportunity for them to take that survey. That information, that data set will be kept separate, but certainly it can be valuable as people want to express their opinions. And then from the time that that closes, the survey closes, it's usually anywhere from 3 to 5 weeks in order to actually build the report, make sure that it's reporting on everything that you're looking for, and then have the report live to you. And it would be in two ways. So one's going to be a PDF. It is a very long PDF. Lots of good information in there. And then the second is going to be a tabular report. That's probably going to be a little bit more useful in terms of like looking at cross tabs, that type of thing. It's pretty user-friendly. If you want to post it on your website, you can certainly do that. And then we're happy to discuss any of those results with you. And so if you have questions about like, where did this come from? Is this a surprise? Does this actually, or does this differ from, you know, the trends that you're seeing nationwide? We're happy to go over that with you to dive, really dive into the data as well and then present back. Transitioning, I actually, I'll ask positive questions. Any questions on the community survey portion of things?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. Excuse me. I could mention the volunteers to take the survey are going to be segmented out. That's going to be completely segmented as in it's like a separate portion of the report? Because obviously, that category is going to be oversampled pretty drastically some specific ways, I'm sure.
Yep. Yep, that's right. So you'll have two distinct data sets then. The one like that we'll hand to you, the one that'll be most readily available for you to look at, that will be the scientifically valid portion. But if you are interested in diving into the participation portion, then that's certainly available to you.
Yes. How long, how long does it take to complete the survey?
Depending on custom questions, so things like open-ended questions can just take a little bit more time. 15 minutes is the average, though.
Other questions? Ms. Castro?
Will that be available just in English or will that be available in different languages? Like Spanish or French?
Yeah, so we can offer additional languages as well, Spanish being the most frequent. Not to dissuade you from doing that, certainly, that can be more than just one thing to keep in mind because so many people use like browser translators. What can also be helpful in order like to decipher who's responding in what language is just to say what's the primary language spoken or, you know, a question like that in the demographic section. And so that way, we can help parse out like, okay, were they using a browser translator? They were viewing the English section on the Polco survey, even though they may be taking it actually in Spanish, just on their Google Chrome or whatever browser. But that's certainly available.
Other thoughts for the council? Mr. Timmy?
I know you mentioned you could segment by council, district. I only feel like that's a necessary data set to compare against because our wards are very different demographically. And I feel like it would be, it might not be a conclusive analysis, but it would be something very interesting to look at to see if one ward has a different view about what's lacking versus another. That can help us with really hyper-focused neighborhood initiatives.
And I think if we're talking about that sort of segmentation of the city, I think we should review whether ward is truthfully the best way to do it.
It'd be neighborhood.
Because there are certain neighborhoods that are packed together. There's circles that are cracked together. For instance, we know Florisian, they run to the two different wards. And that's from a sampling perspective, and one group wouldn't want to split up necessarily. I think that's the biggest example, a lot of brothers came together. But so just, I think if we did it, it would have to be that map, but some map that recognizes these distinct neighborhood.
We had talked about doing it by ward as well, sampling that was going to happen. But hearing what you guys said, I mean, your hearts are rich.
Precincts on the county, if we have that level insight, that could be a.
We have that.
Yeah, that could be a good proxy as well, but I don't know.
Good. And I don't think we'd be able to sample to that many precincts, but to reclassify or redraw them together, which is most sense, perhaps.
I had a question as well. There's so much good that can be extracted from all of these categories. One thing in our current strategic plan that we've been looking at and supporting programs around is our social infrastructure, how connected people feel to one another or to the community. And I notice there's a few questions related to that, like, when did you talk to, you know, like a legislator? When did, how have you participated in an election and things like that? Is there room to include any kind of questions that help us establish like the level of isolation or loneliness and therefore get a picture of that? Especially by age, right? We know we have an aging population, et cetera. What kind of programs, do we have programs that are meeting these needs? Or do we need to beef up other programs? Is there a possibility of including something along those lines?
Definitely. Yeah, and so if there's some piece of data you're looking to get at, I'm a survey member, the survey research team, we're a survey expert, but we do have a team of eight folks. They all collaborate on these custom questions. And so again, if you have a data point you're really looking to, this is what we're trying to measure right here. They can work with you to craft that language. And then that should be kind of run out when you look at cross tabs to see like, well, younger people answer this question very differently than, you know, older folks in our community. So that's, yeah, there's certainly a possibility.
Yeah, I just think while our strategic plan may change in how it looks and how weighty it is, it was such a gargantuan item previously. I think there are some parts of it that probably are like through lines right over time.
And I think, Alec, you touched on this a little as we talk about something like going after loneliness or those sorts of topics. I presume your team would be helping us find the ways to ask those questions in ways that will be answered. Because I mean, emotional questions are notoriously difficult. If we ask it straight out, you're going to get very odd responses.
Yeah, there's a whole body of research out there that I'm sure your professionals would look at, right? In terms of like, I see this many people a day or I don't see anyone in a day, those kinds of things.
Exactly. They can help advise on warnings, make sure it's not leading a scale that would make sense. And then also just keeping in mind, we don't want it to be like too cognitively burdensome. And so, you know, you can gather a lot of good data through something like an open-ended question, but then it can really slow people down. Oftentimes, they'll skip it, and so then you end up getting less data. So they're happy to collaborate with you on what would make sense. Actually, just one other quick point on that, too. It could be a good, like, for a follow-up survey on engage, it could be a good opportunity for that. If you have like a list, you can send out. And so if you do have some, whether it's an email list or a large in-person event, something like that, if you do have like a follow-up survey that you'd like to put out, you would also have access to, slightly different from a member of the survey research team, but a customer success manager who can help spin up a survey for, you know, that event or for a deeper dive into that topic.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
You had mentioned that you approached these with those multiple mail touchpoints. Do you then try and email to those who that records available for, or is that not something you're pursuing?
So we would ask people, depending on for the open participation component, if they would like to become a subscriber. That's how we would retain their email address. And so at the end of filling out the online survey, we'd say, would you like to opt in to receive additional outreach, poll surveys, information, et cetera, from the city of Moline? They can then enter first name, last name, zip, and then email address. That's what can be retained then for the subscribership to follow up. There's some additional capabilities there, too, so you can see who's registered to vote within Moline or registered to vote period. So a couple of other layers there, but that's how we derive the email addresses. But it's not something we use for the National Community Survey necessarily.
Anything further on the community part? Okay, want to continue on business survey?
Sounds good. In a similar vein to the National Business Survey, this is our benchmark survey for businesses across the country. A little bit different in terms of methodology, so usually this is going to be a census. We will measure up to 4,000 businesses within your community. If you fall below that, then it would be a full census, same outreach methodology. And so for those 4,000, we would ask the manager to fill it out. It'd be a postcard, same thing, QR code, and then a unique URL, and then a mailed, a full mailed packet to either a full census of businesses located in Moline or 4,000 businesses.
Thank you.
Custom questions are available for this one as well in terms of other add-ons. Those are pretty similar. I guess one thing to clarify with this is we do need typically a much larger cohort in order to do custom benchmark comparisons. That would really be like the number one difference. We don't have enough communities that do the National Business Survey. I believe it's something like 80. So we don't have enough in order to do the custom benchmark comparisons. Typically, those cohorts are something like 10 to 30. And so we just find oftentimes they're lacking for the total number. But that's really the only difference there.
Ready for questions on it?
Yep.
You all have them? Yes, Mr. Mercedes?
Thank you. How often do some of these cities do this survey?
Probably the most common things that we'll see is the National Community Survey every other year. And then it'll be another survey, whether it's a benchmark survey or a custom survey in between. And so National Employee Survey or the National Business Survey or a topical survey, so something like custom parks and racks in between. And so then they'll just alternate them year over year.
Over two years, the big survey, in-between focused survey.
I have a question about Section 8. It says, please rate each of the following characteristics as they relate to ABC as a place to develop job and workforce skills. My concern here is, one, for redundancy sake, like we, these folks ask and are asked and answer this question quite often through our chamber and what they're up to. And in fact, last year, just was it very like October or August? I don't remember exactly when. A recent survey of education and workforce preparedness was conducted by the state of Illinois for us or in partnership. It's really laden with data. Like, to me, also, we are a city that does not, is not in charge of the school district. And they have done their work with a profile of a graduate and doing a lot of work with the business community. So I'm a little like, let's save them some time and not put that in there when we have ways to get at that information. But do you ever experience people taking that section out? Or is it really just like you guys recommend, you always have it in there no matter what the situation is?
It's not entirely uncommon to strike a question if you feel like it's not applicable. So probably the most common example we use is, you know, we survey a lot of places in the South for snow removal and asks how snow removal, that gets taken off quite a bit. So definitely, if you feel like you have a pretty good handle on that, it is possible to take out whole questions. No problem there. Really, our main asks would be to not change the wording of questions too terribly much in order to keep benchmarks intact.
Sure.
And then not to change the order, but for striking a question, that's certainly.
I would recommend personally, I don't know how the council feels, but for those reasons I explained, I would recommend to the staff that they ask that to be cut. Anyway, that's just my thought.
I would leave it, I mean, I'll just leave that up to you, council. I mean, really.
Does anybody think it should be cut? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I guess I'm not so concerned about striking into a question or, I mean, that section, it's, but it does raise that larger question of, does it make sense to do that survey at all, or is the entire process redundant? And I think to, for going forward, just understanding what are, and then just to answer your question on whether I think we should strike a question would be, what are we trying to accomplish that is different from the data that we're already receiving from, as you said, those other business-related surveys?
That's what I'm saying, is I don't think there is a difference from what's already accessible. And that's why I would just save the business owner's time by, because we, staff has that, of course, results.
You know, if the school district has actually done their own survey to.
They've worked directly with businesses on their profile of a graduate. Yes, they have worked with businesses.
Profile of graduate was a survey instrument. It started as a survey.
That was part of the entire process. It was very hands-on. You worked on profile of a graduate.
Yeah.
Am I stating it incorrectly?
No, I think that you, right, yeah, I think there were several business members or business owners that were at the different sessions to give different points of view.
Anything further?
So where were they, the business ownership?
It was just a mix, a mixture. I don't know.
They've been everywhere in the block cities?
No, it was specifically to Moline, either it was for the Moline School District. I think they were really trying to get at, you know, it's Moline High School. They, or they want to have, you know, career-ready students when they graduate. They want to make sure that they're able to get a job or make it out and just make sure that they're, you know, aiming them the way that the businesses need them to be.
Is that something that I could share with?
It should be actually.
It's out on the way.
It's probably at Moline School.
But not here with us, right? Council?
No, I mean, we can look it up ourselves.
Okay. Okay.
And it's the largest tax entity in the city, followed by others, not us. And the question, I mean, the reason I asked the question is really to see whether businesses, I mean, I don't know how many businesses totally, and we're still challenged by that. We're working on trying to get that all compiled as well with the state with the business registration process, as I'm at call today. So, you know, I think it's just establishing just a benchmark on what small businesses, because you're going to need them all, not a select group of businesses that may have been picked as opposed to a broader, broader audience of businesses who were, who did not weigh in on that discussion which school district. That's the only thing I have yet, I would say.
Well, I guess that's.
And I'm not familiar with that pool they produce or the results.
This is the question then for our speaker is, are you surveying businesses only in Moline that would be connected to this community specifically as opposed to the whole quad cities, even though they employ people in Moline?
That's right. So it would be based within the city.
So only within our corporate limits? As opposed to the chamber or the state thing, which was, that was so.
No, the state, the state thing was just for our area.
Yeah, it was.
And I guess, and this is not so much for Alec, it is for our staff, which I can understand. What is the intention of and how do we want to use that business survey data? Or do we think that it does become redundant, not a full enough picture? And I'm just, I'm not sure I see where the value proposition is in, because of the other data sources we already have in place that exist. And like, because we're so connected and so many of our residents work in other places and so many of our businesses are working with people who live in other places, I just want us to be sure that we have an idea of exactly what we're trying to get out of the business survey. And I think they're. And I think there probably is a way to do that. I just want us to make sure we have that plan in place before we go forward.
Our, our, our goal would be that the general consensus over fifty percent is that we are a business-friendly community. Because I have heard we're not. I've heard that. That's not stopped. I still hear that. And I know that Chris has probably heard that, and others in the room have probably heard that as well. So if we're not a business-friendly community, questions, it's the art. Right? What's driving people to say that? Because we can't, we can't address it if we, if we don't know what your reasons are. And that's really the reason for the business survey. So we can put that whole issue to bed. Comes back that we are business-friendly, well then, there's just malcontents or discontents. And I can't please everybody all the time. It's impossible.
I'm just here to agree with you, Bob. I, I assume that the number one goal was to measure our business climate. And are we business-friendly? And use it as a tool to attract and retain small business, big business, entrepreneurs, so.
Well, thank you for your thoughts. I, I think, and when it comes to number eight, I do appreciate that you have the answer of don't know. Because I would really hope that folks that are less connected to the pipeline. You know, don't incorrectly assess the situation. And at least with that option there, if this council doesn't want to strike that entire section, at least there's that. And, you know, I can take the data with a grain of salt. Mr. Smith?
Alec, is the business survey an instrument designed to give us answers related to business friendliness? It, it feels very broad and not targeted to that need. So I'm just curious of how it's being used and how it's recommended to be used from, from your perspective.
Yeah, similar to the community survey. It's supposed to measure business climate overall, so it isn't something that's super targeted. I would say kind of similar to the national community survey where you may get like a surprising result and then we would recommend kind of double clicking into that. Like, I would pack, is this, this was surprising, or we knew this was an issue, and then being able to like communicate out ahead of it. And so really the goal is, if you have the custom questions, I think those can be very helpful. Again, kind of going back to a community survey example, but if you have something like, we want to really propose this levy. Or you have something in mind, you can just monitor, just measure it, because that can be very specific. But the instrument overall is meant to be broad and then leaps further.
At the very least, it's meant, in this case, I think, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, to give us a baseline that we haven't had previously.
We don't have a baseline when it comes to the business community at all, at all. We really don't have one for the citizens at all, of what's in the city, that, right, when that was debatable.
Okay, anything further?
Do you think it would be helpful on the survey, because I, I, I get what people are saying about the Quad Cities and how, I mean, people live in Moline and work in Davenport or vice versa. I mean, would it be helpful to know like what percentage of the businesses, employees live in Moline compared to live in other, I mean, other cities? I don't know if that would be, you know, helpful information, because I know like a lot of people will come and work at John Deere, but then they're going to be going to live in Bettendorf. So, I mean, I don't know if that would be helpful information to have.
I think we do have that on an aggregate, like on a macro level, we do have a lot of our people that work here, it's like things we can, we can dive into and kind of report on.
And this is, will be filled out by business owners, not the employees, correct?
That's right. So it's supposed to measure business owners and managers.
I mean, if a large corporation of, you know, Cylinder Works might have ten people to fill it out and four hundred employees, that could be twelve over. So I don't know if that question is going to be too. But I still would be interested if all of the managers and owners live in another state, that tells us something too, you know, I mean, so.
So what I'm hearing is the business survey looks good as is, basically, they don't have major things.
Other than me, one word, the other, I'll leave it to you guys.
Okay, thank you so much. Anything further?
Yes, so real quickly, just also wanted to cover a couple of other things. So after you receive the results, you would also have the ability to dive into two other data sets. And so it's called EaterTrack or GPAL, but this is like a public-private partnership. So we collaborate with USICMA, NLC, Stanford, Harvard, University of Wisconsin, Arizona State, a number of academic institutions. And so the reason we were kind of partnered in here is we're the largest data set of local government sentiment data. So then their goal, the academic institution, was to bring in pretty much every publicly available data set that they could find. And then create baselines for every community. They have given us access to this, so it's like five hundred, we call them indicators, but they're really data points. For every community in the United States with a population over two thousand. And so this is counties, villages, boroughs, et cetera. It's all preloaded into the backend of Polco. And so you'll be able to see for a number of these indicators, how you rank, and then it'll also be cross-tab versus your sentiment data. And so you can see how you rank for things like unemployment, unemployment for the state, unemployment for the state, for cities of population size. You can actually bring in, if you have like, we compare ourselves to these four cities, you can bring that data in too. And you can cross compare that versus your national community survey. There's a lot of analytics in there too. So just wanted to keep in mind for like future conversations, if you get something and you're interested in diving into that, that's available to you as well. This is just kind of the overview of what that would look like for a quality and importance matrix. And then finally, it is possible to then query that data. Obviously, that's like millions of data points, so it's a lot to sift through. But if you have questions, that's also available to you. So like, how do we rank on this one thing? What would you, if you've worked with ChatGPT, it works pretty similar, but it prioritizes your data and not going out to the internet as specifically your data. So more to come on that. Obviously, we're still a couple of months away from having results, but did want to make you aware of that for next steps.
Okay, thank you. Any final questions? Thank you very much, Alex.
All right, thanks everyone.
Thank you, Alex.
All right, we'll move to eight point two, the tree bank. Mr. Smith?
Yes. So this, um, this goal, I believe, has been around for a while, I think. Yes, and perhaps a couple of years beyond that. And it was on the Parks and Rec side of things. We've taken it over because. If you really read the summary that's on the quarterly report, I'll just read that for you. It's short. The Tree Bank policy will establish a creative alternative means to meet the spirit and intent of the requirements concerning planting and maintenance of trees and landscape. As supported by the Code of Ordinances throughout the state. Well, that's something that CED does. I just wanted to talk really quick about what CE does currently in that regard. And then get a little feedback on this goal. I did happen to look up just Google search what a tree bank was. A program that collects fees from developers to fund the planting of trees. This is the Google like AI search. The fees are based on a sliding scale on our collective developments that are eligible for fee-in-lieu payments. And so I do remember this being a thing six years ago or so where there were, there was an all, it was like, you know, sidewalk payments in lieu of installing them. Landscaping in lieu of installing the landscaping. So that might be where this came from. But anyway. As you can see in my memo, we currently require landscaping on any new development. And there's a bunch of ways that we require that, right? Just the size of the building, the amount of street brunch, the amount of pavement, those types of things. We also, our landscaping requirements were new as of two thousand and six. So as you can imagine, a lot of our commercial development developed without landscaping required. So we also have a provision, if you're putting more than twenty-five percent into your building, this might get into our business-friendly conversation, Bob. But if you're putting in more than twenty-five percent of what the building's worth, that's when you will have to add that equivalent of landscaping. If you get over seventy-five percent of what the building's worth, that's when you'll meet a hundred percent compliance. We've had this come up with buildings that have fires and things like that, and we try to get out ahead of it and talk about those things. But it does become sometimes an uncomfortable part of the conversation. So that is one way that we increase our trees throughout development. That's one way we deal with these parking lots, like a farming fleet, and then all of a sudden, they eventually get landscaping integrated into it or whatever. So we're a big proponent of getting greened up parking lots and sort of having this flat surface with something there. So many, many reasons that that's a good thing. So on the other end of things, protection of natural resources, this is also a thing that's in our code. There's, you know, we look at steep slopes, we look at shorelines and things, but woodlands are another thing that we look at. And so the intent of that code is not really looking at a single tree. It's more looking at what you would call a forest. I mean, they're calling it woodlands, but it's an area of trees over roughly, depending on if you're looking at young woodlands or mature, an acre or half an acre. So we're looking at it more on the aggregate, and it's a way to keep somebody from clear-cutting a whole side of trees. We had it happen on John Deere Road with an IDOT site years ago. And, and also somebody wants to like clear up a ravine or something, you know, they, they have a couple acres of a ravine, or they just want to go in there and tear all the trees out. So we do have current laws on the books where we regulate that. The question would become, is there, you know? I, I feel like from a staff standpoint, where I, where I would have a concern probably is like, you know, somebody's looking to build a garage in their backyard and we're getting involved with, oh, well, you got to keep this tree or something. You know, that's where I think on the business-friendly end of things, we could start going the other direction probably if we're requiring too many trees or getting involved with residential backyards and one or two trees in a backyard.
And we've run into, Chris is hitting right on us, we've run into issues with John Deere Cylinder and their parking lot before the layoffs. You know, and not wanting to put the tree islands in. That became problematic. It was the hospital and their expansion of the cancer center down on, off the seventh street. So it's, it's a subject that keeps coming up. Ran into it with the U-Haul, ran into it with the Best Buy, right? I mean, I've been hearing this for the short time I've been here. And it seems like it's always more so a business than it is a residence, right? I mean, we have issues with dead trees on private property that seem to still be a problem we have available south. You know, we've got great grant programs through US Forest Service, administered through Morton Arboretum. Great tree planning going on. So we're replacing the canopy pretty rapidly. And I think, you know, we lost a tremendous canopy with all the Dutch, you know, it was not the Dutch elm, but the general ash, general ash trees. So it's, it's a continuous struggle.
We did have to, with the Moline Housing Authority rezoning and that as well, right, we did have to vary some of the just to make that project work.
Right, and as if there's a standard mature oak there, it's probably been there a hundred years.
So. So I just want to kind of provide that summary of what we're currently doing now, what we have on the books. Happy to get direction on this and from Bob or from the council, whoever. You know, I, I just, the one thing I will say about it is, the idea of the in lieu of payment to not install landscaping, I just don't know if we need that. Because I feel like we do have a variance process and I have some good language in this code. For example, if, if I'm telling somebody they need to install landscaping, that's not going to be seen because of like a change in potter or something. I have the ability with this code to just have them not install it, because it's, you know, it would be pointless, right? So if, if the point was, hey, we need more flexibility, I'm not sure we necessarily need that. If the point was to generate money into a fund, that's kind of a different question, you know, a different policy question, obviously.
And, yes, and knowing that of course that from a tree bank perspective was, it wasn't about funding, right? You don't want to do your trees over here, but we can take that money and spend it somewhere else because the city's got enough tree problems. And that's it. That was the idea. But when we are looking at people who are not wanting to put in trees or landscaping issues. Is it that they don't want the landscaping or is it they don't want to spend the money? Because a lot of times you get sidewalks as a good issue, where someone's just like, look at the steepness of that. Why would I put a sidewalk in here? It's going to cause me more problems and this and that. And like, that's fine, but it's not the money, because they will gladly turn to that to put in that sidewalk. Is this really a comparable situation or is it really just them trying to get out of paying the money that the landscaping costs?
Yeah, in my, in my experience too, I don't think I, I haven't, I haven't found too many folks that would like to pay for the sidewalk. You know, I don't, I don't want the sidewalk, but I do want to pay the money of the exact money the sidewalk would have cost. Like, I, I don't find, I don't run into that very often. It's don't, it's usually a money issue too.
Mr. Smith?
I, I'm, I'm not really a fan of payment in lieu, especially for trees. I feel like we've all kind of observed the, uh, the paid paradise problem we have, where we just have parking lots everywhere. And I think that we now have a little bit more flexibility too, by removing minimums. They have an option to reduce their parking lot size and have fewer trees. Instead of having to do their entire parking lot, you know, I think there's a lot more optionality now that is available for them. That maybe wasn't there before, but the Best Buy issues. That, that was a big parking lot for, you know, one business and then, you know, they have a few options now. So I don't really like, I don't like the payment in lieu in general, but specifically.
You're basically asking if this should stay as a strategic plan item? Or if we have in place what we need to green the community and also have some building standards?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the point, um, we likely have made some changes and probably will continue to make changes that allow flexibility and allow that. When it's not reasonable in some way, we can always address that. But it also feels like we've met a lot of the demands from the supply side. So we were trying before to say, well, maybe they'll want to do it, maybe they'll, they'll pay this fund and that'll help us pay the trees. But I think we pursued and received so many grant opportunities. It's not that we're perfect, we have every modality that we want, but we've made a big chunk out of what the purpose of what we were trying to pay for was. And I'm not sure that just throwing more money at that problem is the way to go, as opposed to just saying like, okay, we didn't do a tree bank per se, but we found other ways to address those two similar needs.
I think a bigger question locally would be forestry management, whether it's public property or private property. I think that's the issue that I see with all over the priorities. It's not just Moline, and it's not just Quad Cities, I mean, it's a common problem.
Well, MCDC did try to help, uh, address that issue of dead trees in private backyards. But the grants that they went after made it very clear, like, yes, sorry, we thought we could do this, but you can't do it in people's private backyards, right? So we, I, I appreciate you bringing up the forest management or forestry?
Forestry management.
Management is maybe a different way to package what we're after. Go ahead.
I might still like to consider the payment in lieu of, I'm thinking about, so not all trees are the same. And most of the trees that businesses will put in, or many are, don't have any value to our ecosystem. They're just for landscaping, they're not natives. But if we then plant, like what are considered keystone species, like the oaks that we take out. Like our parks have signal trees and homeowners or businesses would never have those trees, but they, they're high value. So if we have areas, our properties, parks, properties where, you know, along our river fronts where that's important to. Plant those trees and they also benefit pollinators, wild market. So, so I mean, so it's like, I think we need to consider the right trees to.
Would that fall under our forestry management plan situation?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have, in our management plan, it says we need to plant a certain amount of, you know, this kind of tree, this kind of tree. I'm pretty sure the ordinance, your guys' landscaping ordinance talks about the certain kind of trees that you can have as well. So I remember having the conversation with Irene, they're very much lined up with one. They have, you know, the ordinance only has, you know, maybe five or ten different trees. We have, you know, thirty, but we're on a much greater scale. But I think that they already have that in there.
But it might be more of like the type of trees you're talking about down where it's like, it's a landscaping tree. It's not necessarily that value. It's going to give them, I think, more options in our code than probably what you're, you're asking.
But what, but what I think I'm hearing is we could take a closer look at what are the trees under this landscaping that are appropriate? Can we update that list, you know, to, to make them more appropriate?
Yes, and you'll need to, as you do your zoning code in a year or two, you'll need to.
Auto person, Neil, has started to swing me back the other way. Yes, like we can use that to, more of the right trees makes sense. And I think no amount of updating what we allow in landscaping is going to meet what's available in landscaping. And come to that, and come to the same level of environmental impact. But landscaping trees will never be able to replace that. So I think then that bigger question then becomes how much to even allow someone to be in lieu of. Because I don't want, like, we don't want everyone to just all of a sudden say, well, we're excited to do landscaping because it's, it's, well, it's the same cost, but I don't have to deal with a contractor and a this, and I'm making the mess and that. And I wouldn't want to just make it so that everything comes out and how we would think about how we approach that.
Um, my fear with any opting out and not just finding or saying, you need to do appropriate trees is.
You need to do appropriate trees is. Up more than aesthetics. There are some real benefits to trees in parking lots. There's, there's shade, there's heat, there's, you know, uh, rainwater, there's a lot of different things. But I also think that the, and back to the original question, should this stay in the strategic goal? Everyone in my neighborhood wants a tree back in the right of way. Where we used to have them. I'm the only house on the block that still has it. Don't know how that happened. But everyone I talked to would love to have that tree back. And I, and I, this is kind of part of that, that program was we can replant some of these trees. And the homeowner can take on a piece of it or they can, you know, water. And I think like that aspect of it. To get our streets lined again with trees would be really beneficial. The right trees.
The ones that don't ruin our infrastructure.
The ones that don't, yeah, that have deep roots.
Yeah, they don't break our sidewalk apart.
I have a question for Mr. Atkins. So we don't take votes in roundtable discussions.
Right.
So it would be appropriate for me to say that we need to hear from every council person so that you all have enough direction?
Yes, that is, it is entirely appropriate for everyone to express their opinion, whether positive, negative, or in between.
Right.
You just can't take an actual vote.
Right. So right now, what I'm hearing is there's the question of payment in lieu of. Um, and forestry management, right? That, that I need everyone in council to weigh in on whether we wanna basically redo this strategic goal.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
Or leave it the way it is. I mean, we don't have, you don't have to actually weigh in on these two items. You've heard a little discussion. But redo the strategic goal to sort of meet our contemporary needs we have or leave it the way it is. So I open the floor to that conversation. Further.
Um, I think that, I don't think that it necessarily needs to be exactly the way it is right now. I think that uh. With a forestry management plan that we can reach the same goals that um. We were trying to get to. So I think that um, I can have agree with um, that we don't need to necessarily keep the. Keep that, yeah.
I agree.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
All right, I think. You also agree?
But we still need trees, good trees.
I was gonna say exactly what only person in the panel said.
Mr. Timmy, you did have your.
I, I was just gonna say let's redo it. Whatever.
I think you're getting a general consensus that redoing it as opposed to leaning towards this. Leaning toward forestry management and then discussion.
I, I think this is related, but Chris, I don't, the city did a ravine study. I don't know if it was twenty-five years ago. I don't know.
The Greenway Study?
It was actually specific to ravines.
Okay.
And it wasn't a by state, it was a city.
Okay. Yeah, I remember the by state Greenways one.
Yeah, I don't know if it was focused on erosion or trees or what.
Erosion's an issue.
There was one.
Garbage and clutter is an issue. Stormwater management is an issue and fire risk is an issue. And they serve as natural gateways for the net wildlife and community to move about.
Agree, well.
All of these ravines.
I do love that you can't fill in the ravines with this code. I think that probably wasn't the code. So I think that's a good thing. I mean, that's a great natural resource that we have here. You can imagine what people throw in those. So, you know, you gotta have some laws in the books to deal with that.
We've had some enforcement issues with people dumping illegally into the ravines.
Yeah.
Lumber, concrete, blocks.
Fires.
Mattresses.
Mattresses. I've heard a lot of emails reported. I always heard it.
Or anything further? Are you clear on what's going on? Thank you so much. So we move to Ms. Lady's business. Um, I do need a volunteer. We can follow up via email. Uh, but Mr. McNeil's had to step back from participating, being a rep on the by state. Mission that meets the third Wednesday of every month at three thirty. Um, so I need somebody to take that. Um, and I know this is a time when the community feels multiple ways about the environment we're in. I want to, to make sure that for those who are living every day in fear of some sort, not knowing. What we're talking about. Um, we, I can say that we definitely are, have been in touch with the state, with our federal partners to. Be aware of the impact of anything coming our way. Um, we've gotten a Department of Energy. Um. Memorandum, we got a Department of Justice memorandum. Bill surveys that very carefully and gives guidance to. The council and also um, he was able to sit in today uh, for me. On the, I cannot figure out this um, acronym.
Uh, Illinois Coalition of Immigrant and Refugee. I can't remember the last song.
Something, yeah. And I very much thank you for doing that. And as you know, uh, we do have major refugee resettlement. Program in our area. Uh, these topics are top of mind. And um, basically the news was that there's a lot of information out there on uh, Know Your Rights campaigns. Across the state. I've seen two of them advertised on Facebook already in the community this week. So we leave it to. Um, private entities to get that information out, but there is connection with um, local communities um. On what the status of those is right now. I just wanted to make sure everybody had that information in case you have people talking to you about that. That's all I have. Ms. Murphy.
And I have a.
Let's see it.
Nothing wrong there. Thank you very much.
Uh, tomorrow will be the second. Uh, call to action for the Snow Angels. So uh, I will encourage you all to uh, put your name in the hat and uh, help some community members. Um. I have two homes and then my mother's home that I do and my own. So it's gonna be a busy day tomorrow. But uh, help your neighbor if they can't shovel the sidewalk.
It's nothing though.
I have nothing here.
Good luck tonight, tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much for meeting.
And yeah, thank you in advance or. All your work.
We will, we will be providing the public works crews something that needs something warm. Uh, discussion. Earlier this morning. So they're ready. All the equipment is ready. Yes, so that's, that's going well. Um, I just wanna bounce back to the survey from. If you have the ability to pose three to five custom questions based on the agreement we have. Now, the mayor has pointed out social infrastructure and we'll really drill down on that. I don't know how hard to drill. But if there's any other question that's lingered. By that, you know, you don't think these surveys are gonna focus in on this importance to you and for your residents or Moline's residents. Then I'd love to hear from or reach out to Ashgate if you can reach me, so that we can make sure that we. Give advantage of the opportunity before we launch the actual survey. This thing is gonna go very quickly once, once it goes out the door, but you have an opportunity to weigh in. So if there's something that's pressing out there, whether it's something related to the environment, to the riverfront, you know, anything along those lines. It would be, it would be good to hear from you. So, passing it along.
What is the timeline on that?
Timeline, probably what, within a week?
Yeah.
Probably within a week because we're, we're up against, we're trying to get this all done by May.
Yeah.
So that, that way in June, we can sit down and actually have a speech plan session, develop a plan. Which will then help guide budget development for the rest of the summer.
Got it. Any other staff updates? Thank you very much then. And uh, there's no executive session, correct?
No, not the seat.
So I need a motion to adjourn. But that's the second of my comments, so I'm favor.